Recording in progress.
I'll call to order the Monday, September 11th, 2023 Town Council Committee to hold to order at 6:33. Roll call. All councilors are present without the, with the exception of Councilor Westphal. He informed me he'd be a little late, running a little late. Counter communications, Councilor Gieske.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On, on Saturday, September 9th, I attended Thrive 55 and the Groton Town Police's Pet Expo at Thrive 55. It was great to talk with local shelters and organizations and about the great work they're doing for our community. There was also a canine demonstration put on by our town police department. And then this past weekend, I also spoke with a constituent regarding the sewage issue going on in New An- Noank. There is concern about it potentially damaging the seafood industry down there, so they wanted us to be aware. They thank the town staff for their continued updates and dedication to the project and trying to resolve that issue. And then just for a few seconds, I would also like to have a moment of silence to remember the victims of the World Trade Center attack that happened 22 years ago today. Thank you.
Councilor Parker?
Received various communications regarding Noank and that's besides our condolences to 9/11 victims. I have nothing else to report.
Thank you. Councilor Franco?
Thank you. I received communications and had conversations with numerous people in the community. I also received a letter from Mr. David Hume in support of Community Speaks Out and the funding that we had given them, as well as I watched the RTM Rules Committee meeting. And on this day, I'd like to read a quote from former U.S. Secretary of State John Kerry, who said, "Remember the hours after September 11th when we came together as one? It was the worst day we have ever seen, but it brought us, it brought out the best in all of us. In a remembrance of 9/11, I would like to extend love and support to survivors, families of those who lost their lives, and the heroes of that historic day. And may we remember their bravery and sacrifices, and while it can't change the events that occurred at the World Trade Center, Pentagon, or Shanksville, Pennsylvania, we can choose to focus on what came out of such tragedy. Family, friends, coworkers, neighbors, and politicians all came together to check on one another, supported those in grief, and lent a hand to those in need. And while we remember that fateful day, remember our country being united, and the best side of humanity shined through. And this is what we should all strive for on this anniversary of September 11th and always. And may God bless those touched by 9/11." Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have also received the same various emails and communications that other councilors did. And thank you to Councilor Gieske and Councilor Franco on the remembrance of 9/11.
Councilor McBride?
Thank you. Also received various pieces of communication from various residents. Most, a lot of the communication I do receive was regarding the Property Reuse Committee in 2021 and 2023 version. I'm not prepared to discuss any of that tonight. I think today's a day of remembrance, as some of the prior councilors discussed, so I'm going to refrain from any comments regarding that at this point, in memory of what's happened 22 years ago. With regards to that, also on Saturday, I attended the 22nd Annual James A. Greenlee Memorial Scholarship Fund, which is a scholarship fund I started on my best friend who perished in 9/11 in the Trade Center. We have this event every year along with two other events, and it's a fundraising 5K race, where we, we fundraised money in his, in my friend's memory, and we give scholarships out to St. Berners, graduate seniors from Fitch, New London, and Waterford, and we give over $75,000 a year. So it was a wonderful event, and hopefully the community can support that event, as well as the golf outing and the memorial dinner we have in February. That's all I have for an update. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Bordalong?
Thank you. I too want to send out my deepest condolences to the families of 9/11 and, you know, the survivors of 9/11. You know, a lot of what is always said is talks about the tragedy of death, but a lot of the people who are living with the trauma of feeling the guilt of, you know, how come I made it out and, you know, losing coworkers and friends. Living in Connecticut, we live so close to New York, and it impacted us very greatly here, and a lot of people will always remember where they were. And so it's very important that we take the time and, you know, think and understand, you know, how that impacted us and the importance of our homeland security and the people who are serving to protect us every day. So again, I too send those condolences and definitely, you know, feel very proud to live where we live in an area with a large military community that definitely puts that pride of country first and, and really looks to protecting us from the Coast Guard and the Navy. So I too definitely, definitely am saddened by today and the remembrance of that. I did receive communications regarding the sewage, shellfish, short-term rentals, property use committee. I want to thank the town manager. The Pleasant Valley got cleaned up by about 95% or more. It, the trees are down and it's cleared, so thank you for, that was a communication that I had brought forward after one of our other meetings. Also, I did receive communications about the AED machines being put in over at Paquana Plains Park, and people feeling very thankful for that. That referral or suggestion to the town manager, that was fulfilled, so again, to the town manager, thank you for that. It's going to be a great, hopefully it never needs to be used, but it's a great thing to have down at our sports fields. What else do I have? Just reminder that they're having the ribbon cutting for the mural in the city on Friday, the 15th. I think it starts at 2:00 and the cutting's at like, I think, 5:00 or 5:30, but it is up on social media if you're interested. And if you're looking to volunteer for marching band for their home show, which is one of their biggest fundraisers, please reach out to the music department at Fitch. They're looking for people from parking to concessions, any way that you can help. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Jacome?
Thank you, Mayor. Similar communications. I did attend the brew run in the city at East Point Beach on Saturday. Great event, and also in memory of 9/11, the tragic event, let us never forget. Thank you.
Thank you. This morning, I had the pleasure of attending a flag retirement ceremony and the anniversary of 9/11 at the Nautilus Submarine Force Museum. It was put on by the chiefs at the base. It was, it was a very emotional event. They also had a young man there play on the, on the bagpipes, Amazing Grace and America the Beautiful. He was, he was just in eighth grade, so apparently he, he's been requested to play down in Pentagon, and, and he was, he was amazing. So I just want to echo what every other councillor has, has said here. I was very young in, in 2001, but I do remember the whole country coming together. And it was sort of a time where we didn't focus on our differences, and we focused on our, on what made us great together. I just remember the quote that one person stand, that one person said there that I think really exemplifies the moment. United we stand, divided we'd fall. And I think that's just something we should take away every year on this day. With that, we'll move on to the approval of minutes. I make a motion to approve the August 22nd, 2023 minutes. So move.
Second, Jones?
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Jones. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Here's unanimously eight in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Onto new business, bulky waste collection.
Good evening, everybody. Greg Hanover, Director Public Works. I guess it wasn't too long ago back in May that we had a great discussion on whether or not to re-implement the bulky waste collection that was eliminated in 2004. That was the townwide collection. It was the general consensus of the council at the time to not pursue that townwide collection, but rather look at a couple other options. Those two options were, you know, providing dumpsters in specific neighborhoods, you know, for like a cleanup day or whatever, or to start a financial assistance program for those that are in need. So the staff, you know, took a look at both these options, and really, you know, the neighborhood dumpster thing, we've tried that in the past. It failed miserably because people just kept putting mixed bulky waste, household garbage, even hazardous waste in these dumpsters. This is even with town supervision. So we really kind of ruled this option as not being practical, so we really don't want to pursue that one any further. The assistance program, we did meet with Marge Fondulis, who's the Director of Human Services. I always want to say Social Services, Human Services. And, you know, we thought that this was a great idea to start a pilot program where eligible residents, so the, you know, city, town, you know, could apply through Human Services for funding with assistance for bulky waste, whether it's a blight issue, which would be getting the, either town or city blight enforcement officer involved and very involved in getting those issues cleaned up, or even if it's just somebody that needs assistance, you know, removing a washer, dryer, or couch, that, you know, that we would have the funding and the means to assist those folks that are eligible. We're proposing to fund this program with $10,000 of the money that was allocated from the sale of two pieces of property associated with the Nox, former Noank School. There's a little over $15,000 was obtained from that sale, and that was specifically identified to help with blighted nuisance properties. So we would propose to use about $10,000 of seed money for the program for this year. The highlights of the program, you know, like I said, it would be open to all residents only, not commercial entities, for town and city. Human Services would determine the financial eligibility based on a formula similar to what they use for the Perkins Fund, SNAP or WICS program. And then the funds could be utilized, you know, by the residents to rent a dumpster if need be, or to hire a private contractor to haul bulky waste. And then the town would pay, you know, these vendors directly for the services. We would limit the financial assistance to about $600 per year per household. This is about the average price of a dumpster, for one dumpster full. In extreme cases where we need more funds, we would seek approval from the town manager for additional funding if need be. And then, you know, in cases where a resident maybe has access to a vehicle or truck that can get to the transfer station, wants, but doesn't, but is qualified for the program, you know, we would provide free admission to the transfer station for whatever, you know, however many times they need to go. And we can do that, you know, I can just issue a letter permit to those individuals. So that is, you know, kind of a, in a nutshell, the highlights of the program. And like I said, you know, it's really working with Human Services and the blight officers and Public Works kind of all working together to, you know, assist the people that really need help with the bulky waste disposal. So I guess that's it. I'll take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, do we need to read the motion on the floor?
Sure. Put the motion on the floor.
I make a rec, I make a motion to recommend a resolution to authorize funding a bulky waste disposal program for those in financial need. Second, Franco.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Bordalong. Should I speak or?
Point of border. It was motion made by Parker, seconded by Franco.
Oh, I heard her.
Oh, oh, you made a motion. Oh, my apologies. I didn't hear that.
They both said it. I think she got in there a little, a little earlier.
My apologies, Councilor Bordalong. I would like to, though, do I have the floor?
Sure.
All right, thank you. I would, so thank you to the Director for his research and town staff coming up with the solution. I do like the idea of, you know, trying it out and seeing, you know, where we can go. Recently, I, over the past couple of years, I've been transporting back and forth between home here and college. And I've learned that moving is, can be very difficult. And, you know, Groton being a transient community with the military, we have many military families and military members in our community who are being transferred out, and they could have waste. So I would like to make an amendment of under line three, where it says, "Human Services would determine financial eligibility using a formula similar to the Perkins Fund." I'd like to remove the period and make a comma, with the exception of active-duty military and their immediate family on their first application of the calendar year. I think this is.
Second.
Okay. Franco got the second that.
So, uh, thank you for the second. I just think it'd be really great, and, you know, when military members may be moving out and they need a dumpster, it'd just be like I say, thank you to your service, and we really enjoyed having you here as a part of our community.
Could you repeat the motion? Is it adding to the current motion on the floor, or are you just added it to? Sorry, Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Okay. Are you just saying that determine the financial, did you add it to the main motion?
Yes, I added it to the main motion.
Can you read the main motion?
Yes, sure.
Thank you.
Highlights of the program include, program would apply to residential properties only. Blight officer would determine need on a case-by-case basis. Human Services would determine financial eligibility using a formula similar to the Perkins Fund, comma, with the exception of active-duty military and their immediate family on their first application of the calendar year. In instances where residential property owner has access to a sufficient vehicle, a day pass slash passes for the duration needed could be provided in lieu of expenditures. Limit financial assistance to $600 slash household per year unless town manager authorizes an increase. Authorizes an increase. Funds could be utilized for residents to rent a dumpster or hire a private hauler, depending upon the situation. The town would pay these vendors directly.
All right. Okay. I'm going to put my rules chair hat on, sorry. You have to make the motion, make that amendment as part of the motion to include it on the bottom of the main motion on the floor.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Not within the program highlights.
Got it.
Okay.
So, okay, so this is the cow, so we don't need every specific detail in the motion. As you could see, none of these, what you just read isn't even in the motion.
Oh, sorry. Oh, I'm reading, sorry. My apologies.
So you could just add what you want at the end of, in financial need?
Yeah, to recommend a motion and the amendment to recommend a resolution to authorize funding at bulky waste disposal program for those in financial need, with the exception of active-duty military and their immediate family on the first application of the calendar year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Parker.
Okay.
I'm good, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Councilor Bordalong?
Uh, thank you. You know, this is, I think, a great compromise as, as a referral that I had brought forward for bulky waste after the concern about different sections of town not having accessibility. And it was determined, you know, through my own research, remembering as a child that bulky waste was an option in our town. So I thank you for bringing back, you know, something like this. As a person who's been in a military family as well, living in military housing at times, they already get free bulky waste every day, every Wednesday. Every Wednesday, they can put couches and chairs if they live in military housing. That is a provided service they have automatically already there. I do think we have to be careful too, because with military housing, there might be a thing where you can't drop a dumpster on that property. So that would be something to look into. But if they were active-duty military and lived out in town renting or owning a home, that may be different. I know that we already, per a recommendation that I had brought forward to the council, do have a discount for a, when I was a kid, we called it the dump, but they call it transfer station. So I always still want to say that we're dumping Montville, they call it the Montville dump. So, but, um, transfer station, which is great, so military. But one of the big things is, how is the military really going to know that this application is out there? I'm a little concerned too, because then some might say, we're already giving them a discount to use the dump. Should they fall within these income requirements? And I will say, some military families do, in fact. Some actually qualify for free reduced lunch, say their spouse doesn't work and they have a family of three or four. So should they follow, fall within these income guidelines? Some might say that maybe we should still have that. Also, and these are just all questions I'm throwing out, also, they'd have to, would that mean they have to reside within Groton or just Groton Navy families in general? I'm assuming they'd have to reside within the city-town line, would be city and town? That's my first question.
Correct.
City and town. And what about any subdivisions?
Everyone.
Everyone, okay. So yeah, I guess, I guess I have some questions. That's, how would we delineate that? And, you know, should they follow the same income guidelines? That's my first question to Greg Hanover.
For the Navy personnel?
Yeah.
I mean, I guess that's really a policy decision for the council. I mean, I would, to me, I think it would probably be wise to do that.
That would be my only thing, because, and I just, I think it's a great service, and I think having the option to get the already discounted pass as a military. My concern is that folks that have same or equal income, would you open it to veterans as well? So retired military as well, would they fall, if they fell in between those income requirements, would they be allowed? We just have to kind of kick those, kick, those kinks out, would be my concern, and really pin it down and define it. So I'll take my second turn and stop there so the next person can speak. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Hanover, for bringing this forward. I, I remember Councilor Casiri had brought this motion forward for us to, to discuss, so. Yeah, she came up with the idea, so I thank for that. I have two questions on the, the 600 household per year, the limited financial. So that's about maybe 15 people a year. Do you have any kind of sense of? I, it's hard to say how many people would take access to this, but when we used to do bulky waste, is that, do you have any kind of sense how many people?
Yeah, we had those full-time jobs for three people with a truck up every day of the week.
So it's.
Townwide. So, I mean, we've had one situation, I don't know, about three or four months ago, where we helped out, you know, someone in the city, and Human Services actually took funds from another program they had, just as a one-time case. So, you know, Marge and I discussed this, and we felt that 10,000 is a good number to start with for the year, because, you know, it's, we don't know if, you know, there's going to be, a lot of people are going to take advantage of this or not. We have really no idea.
On the last bullet on here, you have funds would be utilized for residents to rent a dumpster or hire a private contractor. Is it your anticipation that they would go out and, and rent it, and then you would refund them? Or do you think it's better for the town to sort of make a, have an arrangement with the contractor so we can control the costs a little bit?
We would have, you know, certain contracts out there with different vendors, and then we would contact, you know, Human Services or the blight officer would contact them on the homeowner's behalf and set it all up.
So this, this last bullet item on here, it, it isn't really for residents renting the, the residents would not be ones renting the dumpster. It would be the Human Services or town?
Yeah, I'm sure, it would be run through the town.
All right, so we probably need to fix that.
To control the, yeah.
Fix that section there, so we're not having, you know, just we need to keep control of it, just so we know what's going on. So that town manager, you can.
It will make sure the resolution.
Yeah, make sure it fixes that stuff, okay. Can you just, maybe town manager can do this, can you just explain to me a little bit the, because we're modeling this on the floor of Perkins Trust. Can you just explain that trust to me a little bit? I'm not that familiar with it. What is it used for?
I think it's both rental assistance and some utilities. It's basically kind of a catch-all for, for those that need. And it's based on, as you could see in page 10 of the packet, you can see that they use 175% of the, of the federal poverty level. So in, for instance, a family of four making less than 52,500. But there's a series of family sizes you can see in that list. And that's really, and you'll see on page 11, what the floor of Perkins Fund application looks like. It's pretty simple. It's something we can easily walk, something similar to that, we can easily walk people through, you know, get it, help them submit for.
Would, would you anticipate, this has a sliding scale, depending on how many members of the family. Do you anticipate any kind of sliding scale built into the, the bulky waste?
Yeah, it would be set up similar to this.
Just like that. So some families may get access to more or a bigger dumpster, and others might get less.
Yeah, that, the floor purpose, just as an example, we'd have a, you know, it'd be a separate fund set up just for bulky waste, separate application. This is just provided as an example.
But that's like a key component of this, of that trust. You see it kind of be a key component of the bulky waste.
Could use the same income for everything. It gets a lot harder to have extra income at eight, you know, family members versus three.
Is that something that, I guess you, that would be the, the third bullet, Human Services using the formula for the Perkins Fund. That's where that would, would come in. Is that right?
Right. And then I would anticipate, unless the council had a different idea, we'll probably just use that 175% same as the Perkins. So unless the council wants something different.
Yeah, the WIC program, the SNAP, uses 185%. It's a little higher. That's what Marge had recommended doing.
Okay. No, I'm going to take your recommendations on it. I think that's fine. I just. I'm just, I'm just trying to understand the features of the Perkins being applied to the bulky waste. Okay, all right, thank you.
Counselor Franco?
Thank you. So while I was reading this, it also had mentioned if we were just gonna limit it to outdoor items or are we going to include interior items? And that was something that was suggested that we make a decision on.
Through the blight, of course, that would be outdoor items. However, I would suggest or recommend allowing it for any in need for removal unless.
Yeah, if, you know, somebody has, like I said, a couch or some, you know, very large item that they can't get outside themselves. I think it would be helpful to have the contractor go inside and remove it.
Okay, if we pay the vendor directly and, which means we're sort of responsible for it, there was an issue on if people are throwing stuff into a dumpster and they mix hazardous waste or other items and there becomes violations and then, you know, with the mixed items in the dumpster, it would probably create a higher cost value on this. Would we be responsible for that or the homeowner? Or the resident?
I think we should probably add something right to the application that we agree we will not throw, you know, we can kind of list out some of the items or else that would be at very cost, make it very clear.
Can we make it clear that if they do violate that, that responsibility of that would be on them? Or how can we handle that part?
That's what I'm saying, have them sign right on the application that they understand these items we can list out. You know, the various things cannot be placed in the dumpster.
And as I read this, it states that the blight officer would determine a need on a case by case basis. So this isn't just anybody in the town that would like to have bulk waste pickup. This is more of a blight issue, is that what this is saying here?
It's primarily for blight issues, but then, like you said, if there's somebody that qualifies that needs to get rid of, you know, one or two items, then we would, you know, take care of them as well.
Okay. I am in favor of this with the amendment on this. This was Counselor Casiri's wise idea. After we had a lengthy discussion here at the council, she came up with this and I am in full support of it and I give her much kudos for coming up with this solution. I do recall us putting the funding into trying to remediate blight from the no-making school property, a small parcel sales and having that money sitting in there. And this would help the people in most in need. And I would be in favor of this and I thank both Counselor Casiri as well as Counselor Gajewski, so thank you.
Counselor Bordelon?
Thank you, I too thank Counselor Casiri for her modification to the blight ordinance that I did put forward and it could not get through and this was a great compromise that the council had come to. So I definitely thank her for that and the council for finding something that we can do to help residents that may be having trouble getting services to get rid of bulky waste. So it was a concern that was addressed and it didn't look like it was gonna be cost-effective for a whole town reactivation and this was a great compromise that Counselor Casiri put forward and the council supported. I am concerned about the inside or the outside. You know, adding military families, you know, I mean, I'm not saying they don't have blight, but a lot of them are moving in and out quick. So is it gonna be for inside waste as well, like furniture they don't wanna take? I mean, would they be able to fill up a whole dumpster? I just, or should it be mainly used for more blight? And I can respect Counselor Gajewski's amendment to this, but I'm just trying to see if it really fits the need is all. Because a military family would be more kinda coming in and, you know, a lot of families I know are like, hey, I gotta get rid of these couches. You know, a place to offload like a shelter, couches or things 'cause they're moving to Hawaii and they're not gonna bring all this stuff over because they have a weight limit and they're over the weight limit. Versus it being maybe a major blight issue. Now, if we're opening up to veterans that are long-term residents, then, that are on fixed incomes, then I can see that possibly falling under the blight. So I don't know if, I just wanted to ask a question through the mayor to Counselor Gajewski, should we include veterans in that? 'Cause those are our long-term residents.
So I did debate it, Counselor Bordelon. However, I did see that it was only $10,000. I would love to include veterans, but based on the current funding, I didn't think it would be fiscally responsible to do that. So I decided to do just active duty military for now.
Just 'cause my own basic experience, a lot of veterans are on fixed incomes. They're the ones that really struggle when they're, you know, 65, 70 years old and they're living off of their pension from the military. They tend to have a lower income and it could be, we also have veterans that are medically retired who are on a fixed income that've been maybe injured in battle or something like that. So I was just trying to think of, you know, that as a need. When they're active duty, they have current disposable income sometimes, you know, versus a retired veteran. So I would like to make a motion to add veterans and disabled vets on fixed incomes.
I'll second that.
I just wanna mention, you know, I would stay away from making a special, saying fixed income. You know, we wanna stick with the guidelines, yeah, you're just veterans and disabled veterans that meet the gap here. I mean, unless you really define what fixed means.
But with the fixed meaning, you have a, you have a sliding scale. It's a fixed section that you have here, that you have to meet the criteria. But if we.
Point of information.
So who are you adding? Just, just, who are you adding?
What I would add is, if I'm, let me just ask the point of clarification. So Counselor Gajewski's motion, they wouldn't have to follow this guideline, the Perkins guideline. They'd automatically be able to use it because they're on active duty, is that correct? Just wanna make sure before I put my motion, before I clarify my question, okay. So with mine, I think veterans, retired vets should also, veterans of war and veterans that are, you know, medically retired.
Okay, understood.
Thank you.
Okay, so I've got an amendment to the amendment, second amended motion by Counselor Bordelon, a second by Counselor McBride, adding to Counselor Gajewski's amendment, veterans. Counselor Parker?
Though I understand why it was added, but if we are gonna go by the federal guidelines, the veterans would follow, fall under the federal guidelines that human services would be established because all applications have to be reviewed by human resources. Who is our point of contact on these types of things? And they would know best if someone needs the assistance or not. So I understand adding the military, the active military and I believe Counselor Gajewski said it was only one time, first time, correct? Only one time that this happens. And the rest of the money is gonna go to the rest of the residents that it could assist. So at this time, I'm not gonna approve it with the veterans because they would fall under the federal guideline of this.
Okay, thank you. Just for, just like clarification, even if you fall under the Perkins guideline, you still will only be able to access this once per year? Is that what you said? 'Cause you said about $600 and that was.
Yeah, we put the limit at $600, 'cause it's about the price of a dumpster.
So.
So you could have a couple.
You could have a couple.
Passes or other thing, you know, it could be more than one time.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Counselor Franco?
Thank you. So what is the definition of a veteran then? How would you qualify what a veteran would be? Is it somebody that served maybe three years and they left the military? Is that considered a veteran? 'Cause I would consider that to be a veteran.
Couldn't answer that question.
Mr. Burt?
I mean, if they just have to show proof they served and live in the town. If you're gonna add all veterans, you know, active, then they can show their ID.
Well, active, yes.
Yeah.
But a veteran is anybody who's served ever.
I think if they showed they served, if you wanted to include that, that's what we would do.
So you could serve for two years.
That'd be up to you, if we, unless told otherwise, it'd be did you serve, you know? So, as Counselor could say, you served three years, four years, five years.
And then, so if you serve for, just say, two years, you left the military and you got a career and did very well in life, you would still get this free usage. So I don't think that actually covers what we're looking to do. I can understand, like, the active military because, as we know, some of the qualifications even are in school system that the active military get in our community. I, while I am always in favor of veterans, I do not see this money lasting very long if we just open this up to veterans in general. Usually disabled veterans, having one myself, usually have a, you know, they receive social security or they receive veteran benefits and are paid from the government and it does not fall under these, under these numbers that you would see here in the Perkins Fund. So on the norm. So while I understand where this is coming from and it would be nice to serve all of us as veterans, I just don't think that this is what, just to open this up to just about everybody in our community would drain the 10,000 very quickly. I don't think veterans as well established on what it means. There was also a question, something about, something about a slide scale that was mentioned here and I've never heard of anything on a slide scale exactly other than the Perkins Fund. And that's, I don't know if that's considered a slide scale, but it's just a qualifying family size and income. So I also will have to stand and say that I cannot support the current motion on the floor, thank you.
Point of clarification?
What's your question?
I was saying retired veterans, which you have a discharge from the military as retired ID.
Point of order?
That's my clarifying, thank you.
Point of order, that wasn't a clarifying.
Yeah, that's not, that's not a point of clarification, but.
I'm clarifying what was stated, I wasn't opening it to all veterans. I'm saying retired veterans that have a retired ID.
Okay.
Thank you, that was my clarifying question.
Okay, so, so you're talking about 20, 20 years.
Retired veterans, yes. Medically or retired naturally. Medically or retired.
So it's not, okay, hold on, I understand. So it's not veterans, it's retired military.
Thank you.
It's retired military.
Well, that's not what was said, that's not the motion that was.
That's my clarifying, to make sure.
That's not what she got a second on.
Would you like me to ask for a second on that again?
I have in my notes, retired veterans was, I don't recall what was said, but I did write down retired veterans.
Mr. Mayor, before it gets out of hand, could you please repeat it, what you've written down for the.
I have veterans, but if it's retired military, it's retired military.
I said retired and you can be retired medically or retired naturally at 20 years. That's what I asked.
Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Hanover, the way this was written, this is, this, your program is really for blight. Situations that have blight, is that the general?
Primarily, yes.
Primarily general qualification. So either of the motions on the floor, Mr. Mayor, through you to Counselor Gajewski, you, if the person has to have blight, if they just happen to be a military person who has blight, then their first pass is covered. It's not what we're doing is making a motion or making a program that covers any retired or veteran or military person that doesn't get first crack at this. It's someone who has blight on their property and if they are also a veteran, they just get first pass. Is that my understanding?
Well, just to mention, you had said something about indoors too, if they had a couch or something else. That would not be blight, 'cause indoors doesn't fall under blight? And again, it's whatever the council wants, we can do.
Is that what you understand?
Yeah, that's correct. You know, it's primarily to help those that are financially in need.
In financial need.
And it just so happens, a lot of times, the blight officer's gonna flag some of these things first as he's out in the field and bring them to our attention, but the people can work directly with Marge, Fandulus and the human services, you know, for other in need individuals.
So it's not a general, let's, I'm a military person, veteran. I'm just trying to just define what we were, what these motions are. And it's not, if I'm a military person, I get access to bulky waste. It's if I have blight in my house or maybe something inside that maybe happened to be a military person, then I might get just the first crack at the access.
No, I don't, I don't think it's like.
I'm just confused at what.
Right, right, okay, so let me try to, let me try to, I don't think it's sort of, military will be like in the front of the line.
That's my question, does military get in front, is that what we've been?
No, no, so in order to apply for this, the way in the main motion, you'd have to qualify under 175% of the poverty line, okay? So if you were, say, a retired military and you made 300% of the poverty line, you wouldn't be able to apply and get access to this at all. So what Counselor Gajewski's motion does is allows active duty military members to apply and get access regardless of where they fall on the poverty line income level. And then Counselor Bordelon extends that to retired military. But it's not sort of like they get to the front of the line type of thing. It's, I, I'm assuming it would just be you take whoever applies first and then once you run out of money for the year, you run out of money for the year.
I think Representative Gajewski's, I mean, I was, I was writing down, as you were saying, with the exception of active duty and retired military was in your motion, you didn't have retired in it?
It was and their families, it was and their immediate family was in the original motion and then.
So can you read your portion?
No, I say their immediate household.
Through the mayor?
Okay.
Yeah, so you don't have a brother over here in another house, et cetera.
I mean, I just had written retired, but maybe I did it in my own head.
Motion to recommend a resolution to authorize funding a bulky waste disposal program for those in financial need, with the exception of active duty military and their immediate household on their first application of the calendar year. And household came from, the word household was advised by town manager Burt.
Okay, you good?
I was wrong. Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Counselor Jacom?
Thank you, Mayor. Just 'cause I know we talked about the definition of a veteran, I know there's multiple definitions depending on how it is, but based on state, right, it's like after you retire and you are provided the DD 214. As for my question, one question that popped up into my head, would this cover director, Alfred Beatty? Yes, it would or not, correct?
Yes.
It would?
Yeah, everywhere in the town.
In Beacon Point area, okay. And then my other question was, well, concern was that each military is not only awarded or given the BAH, which is their basic allowance for housing, but they're also given, there's usually a stipend of some sort for when they move, for when they clean up, which is the moving and then their allowance to clean up the house. So that's something that usually most families will get when they're moving around. So that's just some of the things coming through my head. And I would like to see maybe a generic term, but I know there's not enough money for the veterans, so, you know, I'm just processing, but that's why I wanted to leave my thoughts there, thank you.
And just something to consider, you know, 10,000, let's say people took, every person took this 600, which wouldn't happen, but you could do 16 people with that 10,000, but if you wanna utilize the full money in that fund, the 15, 244, you could do 25 people at the full 600, just if you wanna, if you're worried about the numbers, you know, utilize that entire fund so we don't leave change out there in that fund, just sitting there.
Point of information?
Yeah, what's your question?
Can you repeat exactly what's on the floor at the moment? 'Cause there was a lot said, but I, I need to know what the motion on the floor is.
Okay, so there's the main motion to recommend a resolution to authorize finding of, funding a bulky waste disposal program for those in financial need. There's the first amended motion by Counselor Gajewski. His includes, his extends the, so the main motion grants access based on the Perkins. Counselor Gajewski's extends that access to active duty, active duty military and their families living in the household. And then the second amended motion, Counselor Bordelon's, extends it to retired military. And then the second amended motion, Counsel Borlon's, extended to retired military. And I see Counsel Westerville has joined us at 7:19. Okay.
So is, I'm so sorry. So can somebody tell me what a retired military is? Like, what is the length of service?
20 years, but you can also be medically retired.
From an injury or?
Yeah. So if you, like, if you did 15 years, but you were medically discharged, you'd be retired.
So let's just say somebody goes into the military at 18 and they retire at 38, and then they start a second career in life, and they're making very substantial money, they would still qualify for this if they had blight. Is that correct?
Under the second amended motion, yes. Yeah. Counselor McBride?
Great, thank you. This is all great, did she go on the floor? I don't, I don't, I didn't hope she was. This is all great discussion, but it makes me thinking through some more things. So I have some questions, and I don't know if they're comments or not. As I'm reading through this, this is all bulky waste discussion, but now we're talking about blight. So my first question is, are we solving a bulky waste issue or are we solving a blight issue? Because I was under the understanding, we were trying to solve a bulky waste situation, not a blight. So with that being said, and the other concern I have is 16, that 16, that 16 for the $600 household, doesn't cover a lot. I mean, if we're talking about, even the original motion, 16 is not sufficient for what I thought this council discussed was trying to solve the bulky waste issues throughout certain areas. So I don't think the 6, I don't think we have enough money, even at 25. So what I'd like to consider, and I know there's this motion on the floor, we can add another motion, but what's the number to not deal with this to be a blight issue, but to be, to provide services for residents at a lower amount to allow them to get to the dump to get rid of their bulky waste? You know, is there something in between?
Well, a lot of the time, the bulky, you know, the blight is because they just can't afford to get rid of the bulky waste. So really, they're often tied together, you know, typically, for the most part, if we see somebody where there's bulky waste out there, we notify them if they have the money, they almost always just clean it up. And if they don't, that's when we would step in to help out. The bulky waste, I think, was mostly intended for the lower, for the people with income challenges.
Yeah, so I guess my thought, what I'm in favor of is, to be honest, none of the motions on the floor, because I thought we wanted to really spread this to more individuals, to provide them more assistance with bulky waste, to have a lesser number, to impact more, more people. And I agree with the motions on the floor to add the military, the active duty, and to add the retired veterans. But maybe with the cap similar to the other caps, because Counsel Franco's point is well said that if you have these individuals, even if they're active duty and they're making $100,000, why should they get the benefit? So I would, not that I can put anything on the motion on the floor, but I'm not in favor of anything, because I would propose, I would rather have something where we're dealing with the bulky waste throughout, at a lesser amount, impacting more people, and including the veterans in the active, in the active military. Because I thought this was a bulky, I mean, a bulky waste situation, not a, not a blight issue, so those are my comments.
I'd like to remove my motion and amend it to fit what Counsel McBride stated, hoping I get his second.
I'll second it.
Wait a minute, wait, 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 wait.
Just hold on.
I'm just removing my, my motion, and I'm going to reapply it.
Okay. Counsel Borlon will remove her amended motion.
And I give the floor to Counsel McBride to put the motion down.
He already has the floor. He already has the floor. Counsel McBride, I was listening to what you were saying. Are you saying, just help me understand, were you saying that you just, you would require more money to do what it is, like, what it is you are trying to achieve would not be possible with $10,000? Is that, is that correct?
What I would, what I would try to do is limit the $600 max, to decrease that level to a lower number to provide more people with a lesser service versus bringing an entire dumpster to their backyard.
The problem is, some of these people literally need a dumpster to combat, to be able to do it. We need access to the 600, and most people aren't going to take 600. You know, it might be if they have a truck, it'll be a date pass, or if they, you know, it's not typically going to be that full amount, but we definitely need access to the 600. That's where we price it out for doing the dumpster. Because these properties won't get cleaned up a lot of times without a dumpster.
I think what he's saying is if you, if you cap it, say, at $300, no one would even be, and no one would be able to get a dumpster at all. No, no single person would be able to apply for and get a dumpster, because it would cost more than 300.
Okay.
Excuse me.
Good?
Yeah.
Okay.
So can I put my motion back down then?
I'd like to speak.
What motion?
Well, if we're not able to put one down, I'd like to keep mine stating that I want veterans.
Okay.
We know it's with your mind. Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Borlon makes a motion for adding retired military.
Point of order?
What's your point of order?
I don't know if you can, after you rescinded the motion, for both people rescinded the motion on the floor. So can we put it back on the floor?
Now it's frivolous.
We've never voted on it. It's not.
No, no, no. You, she rescinded it, so we couldn't vote on it. They both said they'd take it back. So we're going to try to put it back on.
Anyone can make a motion at any moment, so.
It's the same motion.
Right.
It ends up being a.
We have been, it would be frivolous if we voted it down, then we made the same motion or something very similar. That would be frivolous.
Mr., can Ms. Manager ask, answer the question then? Can she put it back on the floor once it's been removed off the floor?
I believe so.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
What do we, what is her original, her original second motion?
Correct.
Retired military.
That's correct.
Okay.
Mayor, I just want to repoint out that this is simply the pilot, too. You know, we'll have a better idea, we'd like to get this done, you know, reasonably short time, whereas we could then introduce something for the next budget, once we have a better idea of what it'll cost. So we don't expect this to go all that long, you know, but it'll get us started with understanding the need out there.
Okay. Counsel Franco?
Thank you. After the discussion that I heard here tonight, I am actually going to change my viewpoint here. I am sorry, Counsel Gieske, I will not be supporting your motion. After hearing Counsel Jacom state that active military will also get, they get their stipends, and I had forgotten about that, that you're correct, when they do move, they get stipends to move. So I think offering this to them would be sort of not in our best interest if they already have funds to be able to, to move. I also recall that when this came to us as a townwide bulky waste program, from my recollection, as a council discussion, that was sort of not supported from this council, and it evolved into something different. So that's why we came up with a program, and then to attack just the blight issues within our community. That's how I recall the, the discussion evolving. So I'm going to support exactly what is, how it's written here, and this will, should be able to help people that qualify under the guidelines of, a financial guideline that is, was listed on the Perkins Fund criteria. And while I always like to help the military and veterans, and it has been stated, they do get Counsel Borlon's discount at the transfer station. Is that correct? How much of a discount is that?
It's $10.
$10, so they get it, they do already get a discount. So I will support the actual motion on the floor, and I apologize for rescinding my support. Counsel Gieske?
Thank you.
Mayor, I just want to make sure that you saw that Counsel Westerville said in attendance.
Yes. Counsel Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think, I think my view on this is going to align itself with Counsel Franco's in, and also what the Town Manager has just suggested, is that this is just a pilot program to see how things go. And the 10,000 isn't going to last all that long. And we can sort of track how many veterans come, and how many don't come, and how many blight, and we'll just get a better, much better sense, which we then can make adjustments at that point, at the, you know, when we do the budget and things like that, we can sort of adjust this as we see. But this is just sort of a trial to see what sort of happens, and we can just track. It isn't, this isn't going to affect too many people, because we're going to use the funds pretty quick, but we'll have a pretty good sense of where things are going to go. Is that?
That's the intent of the program.
That's the intent. I think that's actually a good, I think that, to me, that's a good intent. We just do it, we test it, we see how it is, and then we come back, and then we can make adjustments to the program and figure out, you know, if it's predominantly veterans, then we make a veteran portion to it. If it's predominantly not, then we don't necessarily need to. So I think I will go with the original motion also, just, let's just try and see what happens. And it's only, it's only 10,000, it's only maximum probably 16 people, it's probably like 10, so.
Okay. Counsel Westerville, I cannot currently see you, so if you want to speak, just speak up, so I can hear you. Counsel Borlon?
Thank you. Again, you know, military in our community, a lot of times you have one of the spouses, let it be the husband or the wife, whoever's active duty. Sometimes they go down to one income because they're traveling so much, it's hard for the other spouse to have a job. And there are times where there's a family of three that are only making, you know, in these guidelines, so they would qualify there, but I thought it was nice of Counsel Gieske to propose military. I still think having military who meet the guidelines with no questions asked, kind of just go through, makes sense. But also, thinking of our veterans, a lot of people think of a retired veteran making tons of money. There's a lot of homeless retired vets that are currently looking for housing, shortage of housing. A lot of our veterans that we see are, that are medically retired, served in a war. Let it be Agent Orange, different things, not all of them have been able to successfully go on to get other jobs because of their disability. Lot of elderly people that are medically fragile veterans and retired veterans are on fixed incomes. They may be getting social security, but it might be down to one, one person in the household, and they might only be making, you know, just enough to be over it, but not enough to qualify. And, and they need help lifting out couches and getting bulky waste and yard removal. That's what I was thinking, as a way of helping our elderly retired veterans who have served our country, as well as who have been medically injured or retired, let it be loss of a limb or any other loss of any other form of disability, that they have access to this. Because a lot of times, they need help, and there's, you know, not enough services for our retired vet. And a retired vet, yes, is someone who has served 20 years with an honorable discharge, or someone who served and maybe didn't make it to the 20 years because they got medically injured while, while in the line of duty, or even hurt just from some type of error on a vessel, or that made them not be able to perform, continue to perform their duties. That's what I envision as supporting. Living around here, I know there's tons of retired vets and live alone, and some of them live in, you know, senior housing, and they can't get their couches out. And so they, you know, get help to get them into the yard, but they can't afford, or they don't have a truck. And I think having our retired vets and disabled vets an option to qualify under this as a single person, because they might not meet this, this guideline. But a family of 25,000, maybe they make 30,000, but they still don't have enough money. I mean, 30,000 in this town for one person is not a lot. So that was my hope. I hope you guys support that. I think it would be a great for our community, and to give back, as we said today on 9/11, making sure that we serve together and remember. And I think that's what, this is what we're trying to do, is to give something to the most people that have given up so much for our country. Thank you.
Make a motion to move the question?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion to move the question by Counsel Parker, second by Counsel Franco. Not debatable. And because of our rules, it requires five. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? Okay. So that carries five in favor, four opposed, Borlon, McBride, Melendez, Westerville, zero abstaining. Question is moved. We will first vote on Counsel Borlon's Second Amendment. This is granting access to retired military. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, I got lost with the count, because there was a clarifying. Can you just restate what we're voting on, please?
We're voting on your Second Amendment.
Perfect. I, I, I say aye to that.
Aye. Aye. That's three in favor. I'm counting. Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions?
I abstain.
Okay. So I've got three in favor, Borlon, Gieske, Melendez, five opposed, one abstaining, McBride. That fails. We are now on to the Counsel Gieske's amendment, extending access to active duty military and their families. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions?
I abstain.
Okay. Three in favor, Borlon, Gieske, Melendez, five opposed, one abstaining. That fails. On to the main motion, as written in your packet, Counsel Parker's motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
I abstain.
Okay. So that carries six in favor, zero opposed, two abstaining, Borlon, McBride.
Six, that's eight.
Seven. Counsel Westerville, how do you vote on the last?
I vote aye.
Okay. Seven in favor, zero opposed, two abstaining, Borlon, McBride. Thank you.
Thank you.
On to Employee ARPA Fund State Extension Expenditure of Additional Payments. Welcome.
Do you need to read anything, or am I all set to?
No, we don't have a motion.
All right. Following up on the last time I saw everyone, and good evening. In your packet, you have a few different proposals for timelines. I know there was interest last time in looking at extending out the funding. And what was agreed to last time, and we're in the process of processing it for the following payroll, is that the deadline was extended by a year to 3/31/21. And if you look at your chart, that shows the expenditure, and then the amount remaining, 38,000. And I broke it out, I do believe someone asked last time for September, so I broke it out into September and December of the calendar year of '21, and then went out additionally six months into 2022, and then another six months into 2022. I would advise if you keep in mind that each of those numbers at the bottom, the 6250, 7750, and et cetera, those are successive, so it's not inclusive of the prior month. So I believe those total about 41,000, so there's not quite enough to do everything that's on this page, just as a heads up.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Jones?
So, thank you, Director. Can you just explain the 41,000? Is that if you added?
The 6250, the 77, the 13, and 13, yeah.
Okay, so that's where the 41?
Yep, just as a heads up.
And we had, we had talked, I think, the last time about an appointment date as of December 31st, 2021. Is that where we sort of were when we moved this to table?
There were varying opinions last time, so I just went through and I kind of segmented it out so that the council could have some different ideas. So let's say, if you wanted to go to 12/31/21, it would be the 6250 plus the 7750.
Okay. And the justification for that date was?
I thought I heard someone say September, so I went with September, and then I just extrapolated out since last time I didn't give enough.
To December 31st, okay. So. So employed as of date, okay. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Franco?
Thank you. Was there any requests from any of the groups for a date? Did they, had they specified a date in any of their applications?
I don't know the applications offhand. I let that go through the council's process. But after the original date of March of 2020, there were asks to include more folks. but after the original date of March of 2020, there were asks to include more folks. Um, some unions didn't say anything. Some unions asked for nearly everyone, so this 2022 really captures nearly anyone. Any further than that will be in the current year, so.
Right. I do believe, um, that there was a request from some groups that they had originally asked for December of 2021 through the end of the year. And with that, I'd like to put a motion on to, um, request that we pay out till December 31st, 2021, in the amount of an additional $14,000, and return the balance that will remain in that account, when all is paid out, to the General ARPA Fund.
Second that, Jones?
Okay. I have a question for the director. Um, you see where it says additional cost to 9/30? You might have explained this, but I didn't hear you. And then additional cost to 12/31/21 at the bottom, it says, so, uh, is, this is not cumulative, obviously, right? Like, you would have to, in, in order to, additional cost to 12/31/21, you'd have to add 6250 and 7750?
Correct, and that's the 14,000.
So I have a, a motion by Counsel Franco, and a second by Counsel Jones, uh, to cover employees, employed by 12/31/21. That is an additional cost of 15,000. And you said to return the rest of the money where?
General Fund.
This is the General Fund.
Of ARPA.
14,000. That's 14,000. My motion said 14,000, because if you add those together, it's 14.
14,000. And return the remaining.
And return the balance, after everything is paid out to the ARPA Fund.
Okay. Should be 24,000. Okay. Okay. You still have four for 2/17?
So I would say that during 2021, there was still, um, COVID still going on. Um, and, and even as you see this, I think that in the coming year, in 2022, it seems like they've started hiring even more. So it was, I would think in 2021, it was still difficult to hire. Am I correct, even just by showing these numbers?
Well, I started at the end of December of '21, so I can't speak to how it went during 2021.
Right. But this went from March to September, and then September to the end of the year. So 14,000, um, for nine-month period, would be 14,000. Where, even a six-month period in 2022 was almost, was over 13,000. So.
So you're speaking, oh, are you looking at hire dates, are you saying, for when people have come in?
Right. It seems as though it was still difficult to hire during 2021 compared to 2022. You know, so this would also, um, I think it would just cover people that were working during the COVID, while it was still raging on, and, um, things were pretty tough during 2021. So that is my rationale, as well as, um, some of the organizations had originally put in a date, from what I'm understanding of, to December of 2021, when they put in their request. So I would like to respect that, and that's why I've come up with this date. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Jacobe?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I think I can understand Counsel Franco's perspective. Um, I'd like to make it clear, maybe personally for me, that, um, that this would be a hard extension, and I would personally not be in support of extending it again, uh, whether or not, you know, term will be over by that point, but I would not be in support of that. So I'll make that very clear, and, uh, thank you.
Counsel Borlon?
Um, about how many staff would this exactly cover?
The first two, the 14,000 total?
Just, um, yeah.
So there's, uh, seven and nine, so 16.
16 total?
For those two periods, yes.
And I guess what is your professional recommendation, as far as like, what you may have seen in other communities, or how it's, you know, I just, I mean, not to say we have to follow other communities, but, I mean, it's great to be an outlier in some things, and maybe not in others, but it, it, you know, we, are we meeting the standard by what you've already proposed? Would this extension be, um, a bit of a broader reach than most communities are doing? Um, I, I guess, I mean, what other information might you be able to provide?
I recall you asked that last time about what are other towns doing, so I did reach out, and I don't want to get into specifically labeling. I will say the vast majority around us have not. There's at least one I can think of that has, just from a straw poll perspective.
Can you say that one more time? I'm sorry, I might have heard you.
The vast majority around us have not. I know of at least one that has. But I didn't hear back from everybody either, so.
And they have not extended, or they didn't do it at all?
They haven't provided ARPA payments to employees in this way.
And just to mention, for instance, I believe the city has on their agenda tonight looking at ARPA, so we're a little bit ahead of the curve.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it's, you know, if this, if these funds weren't extended, they'd just eventually go back to the General Fund, is that correct?
ARPA Fund.
ARPA, ARPA General Fund. Which, you know, the monies were meant to help communities and staff in other parts to directly, the impact of, you know, the fall from COVID. So, I don't know, I'm, I'm very torn on this, in the sense that I under, I respect what Counsel Jacobe stated. I can understand where Counsel Franco is, you know, going with, you know, extending, but at some point, you know, what I did research on, you know, communities made a date, that's where they are, and it was offered, and something came in, and, um, and again, some jobs in some towns didn't get anything. And, um, so it's, um, just because it's there doesn't mean it has to spend, kind of thing, I guess. Uh, it's great for it to go back into the ARPA funds, and maybe help some folks this winter. Um, homelessness and, um, a lot of those things are still happening, um, today, from fall, from COVID evictions, food insecurities, electric bills, heat. Um, so, uh, that money could do some great services, um, to, um, our community directly, to individuals and families in need. Um, that, that would be my thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Jones?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Director Green, what were the, um, criteria for ARPA money for paying to employees? Is it sort of designated as sort of hero pay, or is that?
They're just being processed through payroll, if that's what you're asking.
Or just sort of the guidelines of the ARPA, of the ARPA money? How is it intended to go for employees?
Full-time, part-time. In the original documentation, I think it was split out by either union or the non-union groups, or a few groups that were lumped together, and there was a difference in the payout. Um, that's about it, from what I recall.
So payout to employees is, is one of the, the, the guidelines of the ARPA money, to sort of assist, uh, employees and, and to give them sort of extra pay?
Are you saying guidelines of ARPA itself?
It's allowable use, yes.
Of ARPA, yeah, of ARPA itself. So this is well within the, the, sort of the purview of the ARPA funding, was to do something like this. And all we're really doing is just extending the pool a little bit, bit more with.
The eligibility parameters is what the council has updated, yes.
So we're well within those guidelines. And whether other towns do this, or they didn't do it, doesn't really matter. This is, these are the guidelines that ARPA was set up.
Just a question that was asked, I mean.
Yep. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Um, I'll just speak briefly. Um, since this is extended to 12/31/21, um, I remember this time fondly. Uh, this is right at the beginning of our term, and if people recall, we brought back the mask mandate around that time, and we went back to virtual meetings for a few months before going back. So if it's, you know, this has been a long pandemic, it's hard to remember certain what time was happening at when, but during this specific time, we did have a mask mandate throughout the town. So it does seem appropriate that if COVID was dangerous enough that everyone was required to wear masks, that, um, perhaps those employees should qualify for the benefit. These other dates after 6/30/22, 12/31/22, there were no mask mandates, um, at those times. So I can support this, this date. Um, so yeah, that's my thoughts. Any other discussion? Okay. Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on extending the payments through 12/31/2021. That is an additional cost of $14,000, and returning the remaining 24,000 to the ARPA General Fund. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Carries unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining.
Take a motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion, motion, thank you. Motion to adjourn by Counsel Parker, second by Counsel Gajewski. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We're adjourned unanimously at 7:50.